Meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. Which stands one nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Undivisible.
Justice.
For all.
Okay.
Roll call, Mr. Brandon.
Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Ernie Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Caper.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here.
Okay, first item on our agenda is public comment or audience participation for items not on our current agenda.
Okay, Your Honor, we, we have four attendees in the participant box, so if anyone would like to make a public comment at this time on an item not related to the agenda, please raise your hand and we will recognize you and give you the opportunity. Okay, seeing none.
Okay. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for the October 20th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting. I believe there was an adjustment to those minutes.
That's right, Your Honor. Councilmember Caper had pointed out an error on which said that Doug Shasso both offered the resolution and seconded it on one item on the October 20th minutes. I've corrected that and sent out a new copy of the minutes to you, to the council members and the media this morning, so the, the corrected version is what is presented for your approval by resolution.
Everybody reviewed the corrected version and are there any other questions or comments? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'll make a resolution to approve the minutes.
Second.
Who's second? Okay, I have a resolution by John Caper and a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call. All in favor? Aye. All same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the October 27th, 2020 Council Special Meeting. Mr. Brandon.
Thank You, Your Honor. These minutes were also included in the original packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes? If they have no corrections or comments, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve those minutes. April 2nd.
I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by John Caper. Vote by roll call. Everybody in favor? Opposed, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Recognition of Business of the Month of November. Sarah Crossway.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, I wish we'd be able to meet in person so I can recognize this business and have them come before you guys tonight, but unfortunately, we're meeting via Zoom. But that's okay. For this Business of the Month for November, they're a really amazing business in our community. They've been able to expand and actually have now a sit-down restaurant. They started off as a food truck, so with that, I'd like to recognize San Miguel's Restaurant as November's Business of the Month. Honor Gabrielle, he's a really great person and I know that his restaurant's a community favorite here in Fort. I'd just like to recognize them. There, they came today, I believe, to pick up their signs, so you should see it tomorrow in front of their business and then the advertising as well begin tomorrow. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Tell them congratulations. Next item is council acting as a local licensing authority and presentation of possible action on the formal acceptance of an application for a new beer and wine license for Zazzy's Cafe and request to schedule a public hearing on the application. Mr. Brandon.
Thank You, Your Honor. This is a application for a new beer and wine license for the Zazzy Cafe Restaurant at 119 West Beaver. It was received on October 9th and we worked with the applicant to get everything in order. It's been reviewed by my office, the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office, and deemed complete and all of the appropriate city and state fees have been paid. The purpose tonight is for the council to formally accept this application, having been deemed complete, and then that would start a 30-day waiting period after which a public hearing on the application could be held. So, because of the way the calendar falls, that public hearing would have to be on December 15th. In the meantime, we will publish notice of that hearing in the newspaper and post it on the property for at least 10 days. And that hearing will be the time when the applicant approves the needs and desires of the neighborhood for the liquor license they're applying for. So, basically, all we're doing is formally accepting the application, setting that public hearing, and staff recommends that's what we do.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution for formal acceptance of the application and set a public hearing for December 15th. If anybody has any questions or comments regarding this.
Ready?
Yep.
I'd say, Your Honor, I'll offer a resolution to accept the application for a new beer and wine license for Zazzy's Cafe at 119 West Beaver and schedule a public hearing on the application for 12:15:20.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Brian Ernie Alice. All in favor? Vote by roll call. Aye. Oppose, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation on ratification of an emergency expenditure for the Parks Department Lift Station. Mr. Glamire.
Yes, thank You, Your Honor. Good evening. What you have in your packet tonight is ratification of an expenditure that I've discussed with the mayor already. Ty couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna carry this ball for him, but we have a lift station down at Riverside Park that services two of the public restrooms and also the Parks Department restroom facility. And this, this lift station's 15 to 20 years old, or the pumps are in, in any case, and they're both just shot at this point. We've tried to repair or at least look at limping them along and haven't been able to do that. It's time to replace them. So, the estimate for the pumps is about $9,600 each, and then the total repair we're anticipating is going to be about $26,000 to get those installed into that lift station. We've ordered the pumps. We're just waiting for them to arrive, and as soon as they come, we'll, we'll get that lift station back up and running again. We did create a capital account line item to pay for this expenditure, but we're just asking to ratify the expenditure for a price not to exceed $26,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
No questions for Steve? I remember when those pumps were put in new 20 years ago.
Yeah.
There's no questions, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution for, to approve the emergency spend, expenditure for the Parks Department sewer lift station not to exceed $26,000.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor? Oppose, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all very much.
Next is a presentation on bids for fitness equipment. Mr. Waller and Mr. Sampson.
Okay, this is Steve. Hopefully, Colby's able to get in. Colby, can you get in?
He's muted.
I'll just give just a second and hopefully you can get in and.
Okay, I think I'm here now.
Yep, yep, all right.
All right, thanks, Your Honor. For the new field house, we are wanting to get some new fitness equipment. The ones we have in the armory is very old and outdated. So, we sent it out to bid. We had eight total, four of those of which were under the $25,000 we were allowed. And although Foundation Fitness wasn't the lowest, we'd like to go with them because they're local, they're right out of Boulder, so if we have any problems or anything, they could come down. The quality was a little bit better than the other two that were lower. And we just think that it's gonna work in with the sales rep who we talked to. We think that he's gonna be able to come down, help us set up, make sure everything's ADA certified and make it easy, so anybody experience level, no matter what it is, you come in and have a good workout once that new fitness center is up. Any questions?
Is this strictly for placement at the new field house or will it be at the armory first?
Uh, no, we're just gonna set it up right at the field house when it's ready.
Thank you.
So, this is replacement equipment for replacing what's in the armory currently?
Uh, yes, I believe the Police Department donated their used equipment to the armory a while ago, and that's what we're still using for most of the equipment down there, so. Um, but I think with this 25 grand and all these machines that we're looking at is gonna make the fitness area look really nice and be really appeasing to everyone that comes in there and enjoys the weight room facility.
Did you say Foundation was the only local or Colorado company that submitted bids?
Uh, they were the only ones under 25 grand. The lowest was out of Texas and the next lowest was out of New Jersey.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Waller or Mr. Sampson? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution that we approve the purchase of 10 new pieces of fitness equipment from Foundation Fitness for an amount not to exceed $20,965.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor? Those opposed, same sign?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation on bids for the animal shelter services. Sergeant Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, I'm standing in for Commander Sharp and Commander Crown, neither one could attend tonight. Uh, we put out an RFP for the animal shelter. Couple of weeks ago, reference, just trying to see, uh, over the years, the costs have risen maintaining the shelter. As the, uh, the agency that maintains it, we wanted to make sure that we were giving the money and it was being used properly and responsibly, so we decided to put out an RFP for bid to see if there was any other entities out there who could provide services for the shelter. Uh, we accepted the bid from the Fort Morgan Humane Society for $50,000, excuse me, let me back up. Per city policy, we advertised September 9th, we closed it, it's October 28th at three o'clock in the afternoon. We accepted the Fort Morgan Humane Society bid at $50,000. And we are requesting that you authorize that bid, that agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution to continue with the services for the Humane Society.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution that we accept the bid from the Fort Morgan Humane Society for a cost not to exceed $50,000 to provide service to the animal shelter and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement.
I'll second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper. All in favor?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on bids for a replacement police patrol vehicle. Sergeant Brown.
Okay, so on this one, a couple of weeks ago, we had a patrol car get demolished by a tree and from a windstorm. SIRSIA came in, evaluated, determined that the vehicle was a total loss, so we need to replace that patrol car. Uh, per city procurement policy, we put it out for bid on October 5th, closing it again on October 28th. Uh, we received the bid from Mike Shaw and Greeley for 2021 Dodge Durango at $31,916. That bid made, met our specifications and we are asking to, the council to accept that bid.
So, this is a SIRSIA, a replacement for a damaged vehicle?
Yes, sir. That vehicle was parked at Sergeant Greenwood's house and that windstorm that came through knocked down the tree and crushed that vehicle, so it was a total loss. Ouch. Right.
Okay.
Sergeant Brown, have you guys had any other Dodge Durangos?
We have three, excuse me, we have four Dodge Durangos we just purchased. They haven't been put into service except for the investigator vehicle. Um, I have two sitting at the office right now. I just gotta get a radio on them from the cars that they're gonna replace and get them on the road.
Okay, I just was looking for some kind of feedback on how they've been compared to the SUV with a Ford.
Yeah, I, I don't know, other than Ford went up pretty significantly in their prices for the interceptor. And we were trying to stay local, at least with maintenance and stuff, since we have Ehrlich here with the Dodge shop. Any problems we have are, it's easier to take care of than try, having to drive the Greeley.
But we didn't get a bid submitted from Ehrlich, though?
We did not, and I, and I don't know why, other than Mr. Sampson's no longer there, so I don't know what happened. But, um, Mike Shaw was the bid we got. It went up a little bit from the 2020s, but not much and still less than the Fords.
Was that a state bid that they went through to to get it, or?
I, I think we just went through the city bid like we always do, and that was the one we got. The Dodge Durangos, the Dodgers usually end up being cheaper in the long run anyway.
Okay, any other questions for Sergeant Brown? Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution that we accept the bid from Mike Shaw in Greeley, Colorado to purchase one Dodge Durango vehicle for a price of $31,916.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation on bids for equipment for upfitting police vehicle.
Okay, so, as you all know, we had to replace that vehicle. Now, we have to outfit that vehicle. Again, per policy, we put out a bid to, for outfits October 5th, closed to October 28th. We received a bid from Laws for $14,000 to outfit that, uh, patrol vehicle, and we are asking that you authorize that bid.
Was there anything salvageable off that vehicle that we normally would use for upfitting, or?
Uh, we, the radio and the the console, the light was, we couldn't get the light off and any of the other stuff. It was basically SIRSIA just came in and, uh, so we got what we could. We're gonna take it down to Laws when we get that vehicle with the vehicle and they can, since they were the ones who outfitted the vehicle in the first, that originally.
Okay.
Hopefully, and actually, I take that back because that was a Ford interceptor, so a lot of this stuff's not gonna work on the Dodge Durango, so we have to just see what they can use and, and hopefully save a little money here and there.
Okay. Any other questions for Sergeant Brown? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution that we accept the bid from Laws of Inglewood, Colorado for a cost not to exceed $14,000 for the purchase and install of needed equipment into the vehicle that we just approved before.
I'll second. Caper.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by John Caper. All in favor?
Um, that resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next is a presentation on a resolution approving escrow agreement and the contemplation of the purchase and sale of real estate. Ms. Williams.
Hi, everybody. Um, we spoke about this in executive session, but now we can talk about it in public regarding the property in Phoebe Farm subdivision and setting aside 20-something acres, and when we, we had spoken about offering that $50,000 deposit was given from the owner and that we would give, hold on to some of that, um, should they, after their due diligence, not purchase the property, but they offered to, that we would hold on to the full $50,000 deposit, which is already, we were in our possession. Um, should they not move forward after the due diligence, they're really hoping to, everything works out, um, to start this business in, in Fort Morgan. Um, so we recommend approval of this escrow agreement, and I don't know if Sarah wants to add anything because she's been working on directly with the business.
Uh, no, nothing specific to add, just as Nia said. We met with the potential business owner last week, Steve and I, and a couple of other directors, um, and everything seems to continue to move forward, so hopefully this will end well.
Great.
Great. And they wanted the entire parcel, correct? The whole, to hold the entire parcel?
Yeah, the 20-something, um, 20-something acres. So, in exchange for that, uh, we're, they, they, uh, they offered that we would hold on to the entire $50,000 should that not go through, which makes sense because we're holding it, that, off that whole parcel.
Sure.
26 acres.
26 acres. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Ms. Williams or Ms. Crossway? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
And Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution authorizing you to sign an escrow agreement in contemplation of the purpose and sale of real estate and thereby authorizing the sale of real property of Lot 1, Block 2 of the Phoebe Farm subdivision property. That's my.
Second.
Who had that one? Brian?
Yeah.
A resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Brian Ernie Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks. Look forward to them moving forward.
That's great news.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1247, the annual appropriations ordinance, the appropriation leveling, levying a tax upon the taxable property of the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, and appropriating monies to the seven funds of the said city. This is a public hearing. Keep, keep public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit the comment to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise inappropriate. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brandon, was this public hearing properly noticed?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on October 23rd.
Presentation of the ordinance. Mr. Glamire.
All right, thank You, Your Honor. Uh, this is the final step in the process of approving the budget for the city of Fort Morgan tonight. Uh, I think we've been through this document a number of times, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to take it line by line, if you will, and ask your questions, but this is the opportunity, one final time to bring anything up that you have on the budget or questions you might have. But really appreciate the staff and all the hard work that went into this budget, just under $72 million in expenditures for the city of Fort Morgan for next year, and we're excited to bring this budget to you tonight for, uh, final adoption. I do think we have a couple of folks on the attendee side, but not aware of any other public that might be of interest tonight, but, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Jeannie's here as well. Uh, appreciate her staff and, and her hard work on this as well, so.
Did you say you want to go through this line item by line?
Well, I know Kevin said he wanted to, you know, stretch the meeting out a little, and we could certainly do that. That would be one way to make that happen.
Like Sashow said, looks like a bobblehead over there going, uh-uh.
We also mentioned the meeting he could attend on his own. Um, does anybody have any questions regarding this? This is our second reading, so I think we've covered it through an entire year, so hopefully everybody is comfortable with it. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, we do have a couple of people in the attendees on the, uh, in the chat, so if anybody wants to speak on the, the public hearing for the budget, uh, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Okay, I think we're seeing none.
Seeing none? Okay, seeing none? Is there, is there anybody else in the public that would wish to speak? Nope. I'd ask the city clerk if you received any oral written comments in your office prior to this public hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Thank. Council discussion, does council have any questions or discussion regarding the budget appropriations?
All good.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. All in favor of closing? Aye. Oppose, same sign? That motion carries. Council action. Ms. Williams.
Hi, everyone. On your second page, uh, two of your agenda is a resolution you can make. If you're approving the ordinance, obviously, the other actions are to table.
If you're approving the ordinance, obviously other actions are to table, continue, or to make a resolution on denying that ordinance. And it would be based on, you know, everything that's in the packet, all the information.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution to approve ordinance number one two four seven, the annual appropriation ordinance.
Caper, second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper. All in favor?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next.
Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Thanks for all your guys' work. A year-long venture.
Yeah.
Next item is reports by officials and staff. Steve, you have any?
Yeah, I don't know that I have a, a whole lot of updates. Um, we are starting to see some interesting COVID issues, uh, in and around the city. You know, we've, we've got a few staff members that, um, either have been tested positive or experiencing some symptoms and are working to get tested. We're trying to mitigate that, of course, as best we can, uh, just encouraging, uh, the, all of the, uh, guidelines that are out there, mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, all of these, uh, types of things. And so hopefully we can, we can contain this a little. Um, but I just want you to be aware of that. The, uh, to that end, the chief of police process, uh, did get delayed because of some concerns with, with COVID. And so, uh, you know, I'll be working with, uh, with you all to find another date, um, to, uh, to continue that process. The candidate we have coming from out of state has been notified uh, and, you know, is, is aware, and so we're working to, uh, again, to find another date to, to bring that candidate out and, and, uh, finish up that process. Projects are moving along. They're supposed to pave, uh, tomorrow, start paving tomorrow at the apartment complex project. And that's about two and a half days worth of paving for them. You'll be seeing before long that final plat come before your, uh, before this body for approval. Once that process is finished, uh, that's the mechanism that creates the lots. And then these folks can, can go in and start building. They can get building permits at that point and start, uh, bringing those apartments out of the ground and, and the developer still wants to have apartments, uh, finished and ready for rent by, uh, late winter, early spring next year, and so they're well on track to do that. We're pretty excited about, uh, seeing the first of those units go up. Come out of the ground and, and get under construction. Field house is moving along well. Uh, almost all of the roof is on at this point. And so we'll expect to, uh, hopefully have that completely dried in before winter and, and be working on the interior of that building. So, um, projects come along well. They're actually trying to do curb and gutter this week outside for the parking lot, some of the roadway. So they would like to get a, a layer of asphalt down yet this year. We'll see, depending on the weather, if we can get that done. But, uh, the project's moving along well. Uh, lots of little things going on. But happy to answer any questions or, uh, um, address any concerns that you all might have, but those are a few reports from me tonight.
Date on it or just waiting to have everything cleared with the COVID issue?
You talking about for the chief position, Lynn?
Uh, yeah, the, the interviews and, and the, the visit from the article.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to figure out the right date for that and, and get past a, a few, um, potential exposure issues. One of our, um, professional panelists, uh, invitees may have been exposed as well. So we're just trying to get past all of that and make sure everybody's clear and, and, and ready to go, so.
Okay, I was wondering if you'd set a date yet or not, so you hadn't said the, okay.
No, we just got postponed it today, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Glenn Meyer? Brian, did that answer your question on the plating?
Yeah.
Okay. Any reports or comments from officials?
None for me.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, all of our recent bids have closed, uh, under meetings. The planning commission is scheduled to meet on Monday, November ninth at four thirty PM here at City Hall. The senior center advisory board will meet on the tenth at one thirty PM at the Gene Doty Senior Center. Then November eleventh, which is a Wednesday, all city offices will be closed for the Veterans Day holiday. On November sixteenth, the library advisory board is scheduled to meet at four thirty PM in the community room. And then the next city council regular meeting is scheduled for, uh, November seventeenth at six PM here at City Hall.
Seeing no other items come before this council, I will adjourn this meeting.
Hey, thanks, Mayor.
All right.
Hi, everyone.
See you, Nina. Be safe.
You too, Mayor.
Bye.
Bye.